I have a meeting to order at 6:30. Regular meeting, and the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 14th.
And make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting held December 14th, 2021. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, audience of citizens, any business to come before the board that is not already on the agenda.
I have a couple of things.
Come on up to the table and let's have a conversation.
Fred Jordan, West Elm Street, Deep River. Recently, I had my septic system pumped, and I was talking to the driver, and he told me what the fees were going to be. And having a fairly long memory and having lived in this town over 30 years, I was shocked to hear that there was a tipping fee for the septic waste. When we signed on to the sewer treatment plant program in the very beginning, the townspeople voted for it, myself included, on the basis that A, it was good for the town, but B, one of the things that they also said was that people that were never going to be hooked up to the system or were not hooked up to it would not have to pay for disposal of septic waste at the town transfer waste facility.
Yeah.
And then I found out that that wasn't the case. I made a phone call to Ted McKenzie, who said, no, that they decided to take that away because they didn't have means of monitoring what came from where. Well, that sounds like a management problem at the sewer treatment plant. In the meantime, if the townspeople voted on the basis of a town meeting to approve the septic system with that as one of the criteria, and it got taken away, that should have also gone to a town meeting. I don't recall any such town meeting.
I don't either. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, because the WPCA is, while it is under the umbrella of the town, it has its own meetings, their agenda is set at a town meeting, it's not announced by us and all that kind of stuff. Fred, this is the first I've heard of this, and I'm happy to look into it.
Yeah, because I just, I think that if that was, something was changed without the approval of the people that approved their admiration in the first place, that's very inappropriate.
Well, I can only tell you-
I may have paid more than once, and many other people may tell me, sure, but we're all working.
I've been-
You know, my wife pays the bill, I shouldn't necessarily see it.
I can tell you that I know that I've paid for it, but I've only been here 20 years. The sewer was here-
Now you don't have to, you're paying for it directly, but that's a whole story.
Well, no, not, one of my houses is not, it's not connected, so.
So that was, that was one of the things.
Okay.
The others, and you're well aware that I'm not very happy about the rumble strip issue.
Yeah.
And I did attend that online meeting, which I think, number one, I think, was a farce. For the simple, for starters, because it was advertised in the New Haven Register. Now, we have a town newsletter, we have a valid courage, people actually read. I couldn't tell you five people that subscribe to the New Haven Register in this area, so how would anyone have even been aware of it, let alone it was a very clumsy venue to work with?
It was, I will, I will let you finish, and then I'll respond.
Now, I think that if we're going to give residents a true opportunity to have a voice in that, that should be on the basis of a town meeting, where residents of those areas are adequately informed and have an actual voice in it. Because, again, people are working, a lot of them don't have time for it, but certainly, had I not been on the town website or, you know, on the email list, I wouldn't have known about it either, because I don't get the New Haven Register. You know, we talk about a lot of different kinds of pollution in our community, and one of them that I'm against is light pollution.
Yeah.
Used to be you could see the stars in this town, now you can't see them because everything's lit up. Now we have noise pollution, and every little bit that you add, it's bad enough that we have tractor trailers with jake bricks, which I'd love to see an ordinance against in the town, because they're not necessary in the speed limit areas that we have, but certainly rumble strips add to that noise as well. And I don't see a necessity for them, you know, I've heard, well, if it saves one life. Well, you know, for starters, cars today are being developed where they stay in their own lanes by themselves even. So we're kind of selling buggy whips for a problem that doesn't exist, because these roads that they're discussing don't have a history of had on pollutions as it is. I've lived where, in my house, for over 34 years, and every car accident I've seen has been where somebody ran off the road, not crossed the center line. The only times they crossed the center line was because they were out of, out of control from the other side, perhaps, and over correcting, but I've never seen an accident caused by crossing the center line. I will say, though, that it's added a lot to the noise level in my home. I'm less than 20 feet from the center line of the road, 25 feet. The road in front of my house is only 11 and a half feet wide at that point, the usable lane width, and that's to the edge of the pavement. I measured all of this while the road was closed this summer, and there's very little of West Elm Street from West Bridge Street all the way to where the bridge is closed that even fits their criteria, yet there they are. Yet they claim they follow their criteria, and my concern is, how well have they even studied that criteria in the other areas? You know, they talk about distances, and like, the fact is, is that even Jim's wife has said she can hear it from their house, they happen to live on a straight stretch of road and a long distance from the road, let alone people that live much closer.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that the residents in that area should have a better voice than that Mickey Mouse public hearing that was held by the state in order to-
Well, I will tell you, I was at that meeting, and I agree with you, the format was very cumbersome. I couldn't get on the advertised, I had to go through YouTube, so the only way to make a comment was via, to actually make a phone call.
Right, and then they paraphrase whatever was said.
It was very cumbersome. So I agree with you there, and one of the calls that I made to them was, I don't need you to air this, but I do want to talk to somebody, and they called me back during the meeting, and we're arranging for a meeting to get them down to look at Route 80, because this group of people are not the same people that were there when, when we were dealing with Route 80. And I explained to them the same thing that I've explained to you over that process, and they have said very clearly that that is not the process that should have happened, this is the process that should have happened then.
But even their process is flawed, because it doesn't give the townspeople a proper voice.
They had enough of, they had, they heard enough from you and Jane and whoever else was there, that they want, they're going to do further investigation. They're going to do more of that investigation into Route 80, so that is something that I'm grateful that you, you all came and that they had this meeting, and that you all spoke about Route 80. We're going to take a ride up Route 80, we're going to get a look at it, we're going to have a better assessment of what they can do there. On Route 145, we will continue to have conversations with them and try to, try to move them along to a point, but if, what I didn't like about the presentation was it sounded like a robot. It was not, it didn't, it just wasn't, I wasn't able to understand any of it.
Well, much of what they said, excuse me, but much of what they said is, we're telling you what we're going to do.
I know, believe me, I know that. I've had those conversations for three years with them. And I think it's important for us to continue the conversation and to continue expressing our displeasure with some of the decision-making process and with the decision.
I know, I know there are people out on Route 80 in the Stephenstown Road area that already are unhappy with the noise levels they get-
Yeah.
-in that area, and not all of them are people that you'll see at town meetings-
Right.
-because they're busy working, that's what-
Well, that's why the meetings are at night.
You know, true, but, but same token, they also be able, they also have to know that these things are taking place.
Yeah.
You know, if it had been in the town newsletter, and I just received my second one recently-
Your second newsletter?
Yeah, the winter one just came.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, everybody gets a valid courier every week.
Well, the newsletter goes to press, this, this meeting was scheduled in between the time that that goes to press and when it happens, so.
But the valid courier has come out in between then.
Absolutely.
You know, and why, why that wasn't also used as a venue to-
The town-
Certainly the selectmen have that access to that newspaper that-
We advertised this meeting in all the ways that we could without taking out an advertisement in the newspaper. The state indicated that, did, in fact, take an advertisement out of the newspaper. It was not the paper that you read, wasn't the paper that I read.
No.
But I don't read the valid courier either, so it wouldn't have done any good.
I think a large number of the residents do, because-
I'm sure they do, comes right to your house, and throw it in your front yard.
We don't have to put an ad in that, because the selectmen certainly have a voice there that I'm sure that the newspaper would recognize and publish without having to pay for an ad and say, hey, folks, this is what's going on in the town of Deep River.
Do you think we can, I have to interrupt, but do you think we could request the state to come down? You said they're going to come down, you guys are going to riot.
Yeah.
Why can't we have them come down and have a town meeting like we did two years ago when they were, talked about putting the bridge in front of Fred's house?
The bridge, yeah.
Let the state come down and let them talk about it versus this online BS.
That was the normal process, that is the normal process. This, they did the online, because the state policy-
Yeah.
...is to not have in-person meetings. This was the best that they could do.
Permanent decisions could be forestalled in that.
Well, those are, those are part of what we're trying to do, Fred. I understand your displeasure, believe me.
At one time, at one time in this town, they wanted to take down the trees up by Devon Field, and Dick went to bat for the town and said, no, you're not going to turn Main Street into a superhighway and cut all these trees down. And he took the state on, and the trees are still there.
He was a great first elect.
We have, we have, as townspeople, more power than the state really knows we have, and when they start saying that this is what we're going to do to the detriment of the people who live in the town, then that's not necessarily a good thing. And townspeople count on you three sitting here to forestall a lot of those actions. You know, and it's the same thing with the speeds that go through the town, the traffic. I don't see any reason why the town can't even push the state harder on that. You know, there's no reason why Main Street shouldn't be 25 miles an hour, you know, because we have three places where kids frequent for ice cream and treats and that sort of thing. What's it going to take to get the state's attention? A kid getting hit because cars are coming through with the posted speed limit through the center of town? Those are all things I think we need to fight for.
Well, I'm not going to argue for the state, that's for sure, because I agree with some of what you're saying, so I appreciate your coming and saying it.
As far as the septic goes, I think that's something, you know, that if, if townspeople are being charged by the town for a dump, and that was never approved by the town after we, we gave them the go-ahead for their plant, I don't think that that's right.
Well, I agree, I'm going to look at, I'll look into it.
Hold on, townspeople a bunch of money.
This was something that I, I was unaware of that vote. That vote happened long before I was around, and they're not being charged by the town, they're being charged by the WPCA, so we'll look into it.
Yeah, correct, but the fact is, is that the town approved funding their program on that agreement.
Absolutely. Well, we will look into it, I appreciate you pointing it out.
Thank you, Fred. When would we know that there was some news on that?
You're happy to call the town hall when you want to, or we'll be back here in two weeks?
Okay.
By the way-
Hang on one second, you had another hand up before yours.
Just with regards to the sewer operation, in the early days when we started the plan up, town residents were allowed to have a thousand gallon pump a year free, and it was taken care of through the sanitarians' office. All they had to do was call them and get your name on the list, and then call whoever the hauler was going to be, either pumper, and they would pick it up and they'd take it down.
Yeah.
The problem is, from my, what I gathered from Ted McKenzie is that the treatment plant only accepts full loads from trucks, and it doesn't make sense for a hauler to pump one tank and run and dump it. Pump one tank, run and dump it. And, you know, you live on the basis of Indian tourism life, where I would think that if someone's alive, there's certain gallons, then they have to show up through the sanitarians' office with however many gallons that they did, and then at that point, they have to start forward again. Because, yeah, it's crazy to think that they're going to run from one house to the treatment plant and make money. That doesn't, if we understand what they do as well. But that's where we sit right now, is that they're discharging the residents.
Well, thanks for pointing that out. We will do our best to get to the bottom of it.
Do you have anything more, Greg?
Well, no, I, when I, I don't, I talked to Angus earlier, but on your agenda, you have a, an appointment for, for the finance, and I checked with the town clerk, and she does not have any official resignations from the board of finance.
Like I told you earlier, yes, she does, so.
Well, she does now, but when I went in this morning to look, there was nothing on record, so. And I also checked on the statutes, state statutes, which basically say that the board of finance is the organization that appoints to fill a vacancy. So they need to have a special meeting called, and that should be the call of the meeting is for that specific purpose, to fill a vacancy. And it's not an appointment by the selectmen, so I just, that's why I checked, when I went online and got the agenda, I realized that it's not something that we would normally, you would not normally do here at the Board of-
Right, and that's why I said to you earlier, as soon as you walked in, that I appreciate your coming in and pointing that out, so we looked it up, and you are correct, and that's why we're changing that to the way that it's written.
So it's going to be across to the board of finance?
Yeah, they have to call a special meeting.
Jane, you had your hand up?
I was in agreement about, you know, it has to be board of finances appoint somebody, but along with, on the center strips, from what I got from that meeting, they kept saying, we're going to listen to the, to the residents of the town, but then they dumped it all on you.
Hmm? Yes, they did.
They didn't say, we're going to talk to the town, they just said, we're going to take it into consideration, and then they dumped it on you by saying, we'll talk to the first elect.
Mm-hmm.
Which means that they aren't talking to the town, and, you know, a bunch of people from the state are going to come in here, and they move over, well, you're tall enough, they can't move over you, they couldn't with me, but, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't think that that's, that that, I mean, yes, you're our elected representative, but as far as I was concerned, they just dumped it all on you.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, but, you know, we're going to continue the conversation, we're going to, if, if we, if the only way that we can have a town meeting is online again, we'll do it in a different format, so that people can participate better. It was very, as I said, it was very cumbersome, I was very uncomfortable with it, and, and I don't know, I think that you were there, I thought I'd say that.
I was.
But there were, there were only 12 citizens there. Maybe that's big-
It was hard to do.
Maybe, it's, absolutely it was hard to do, I struggled with it myself, so we'll try to, we'll try to do better, we'll make sure that, we will require, or we'll certainly request that, that we have another town meeting in a format that is easier and more accessible than the one that we had. And that's, that's, that's what we're going to try to do, but in the meanwhile, we'll take a couple rides with them, and we'll, we'll have more meetings. The group that is there now are much better than the group that was there four years ago. They are responsive, that we're working on all kinds of things around town that I think are going to be better, and it's a direct result of the people that are in that office now. And I don't know how long they're going to be there, so we're going to try to keep on, keep that progress going. But I appreciate you guys coming in and voicing your opinions.
One other thing, I noticed in Chester, they're questioning, are we getting monies from federal or state?
Yeah, we have that money, we're coming up with ideas on how to spend it.
Oh, so nothing has been decided?
No. There, that's, as we spend that money, we spend that the same way we spend all of our money. We have to, the board of selectmen, board of finance, town meeting.
Involvement with the sustainability committee, for example?
Sustainability has some, some input.
And economic development?
Economic development has some input. Economic development, public safety, and, and public welfare are really the three prongs that the federal government wants us to focus on with that. I can tell you that the social services is going to, some, some money is going to be suggested that we spend on social services. Right now, we've got a very limited access to social services here, and, and we're hopeful that we can get the, get something set up so that the town will agree that we can have a full-time person for a few years paid for by this, this money. And, you know, those are just some, one of the ideas that we're, we're floating and we'll bring to the town, I hope, I hope fairly soon.
Is, is there any way we could use some of the money to get test kits or something?
Get what?
Testing kits.
Those are on their way.
I gather, in Deep River, Chester, and Essex, it's, you know, rising.
Well, I, you know, this, this is not going to get broadcast until after this project begins, but you're all aware, I'm sure, that the governor's announcement yesterday, that all of the towns in Connecticut are being, are being given an allotment of tests, test kits for distribution. We had a long meeting this morning with emergency services, board of selectmen, about how we can distribute those. But, and before I get to that, let me finish or go further, I expect that next week, we'll be getting an allotment of N95 masks. And then I expect that the week after, or the week after that, we will be getting an allotment of test kits from the federal government. So we will have a distribution process set up. Right now, it looks as if it's going to be Thursday evening, between 5:30 and 7:30 for a drive-through pickup for the test kits. But we were only allotted 600 test kits for a town of, you know, 5,000. So it's, it's going to be difficult for how we distribute them, we're trying to figure that out, more than likely going to be a first come, first served. I will be sending out an email to the town, and we'll put it on the website, that this particular allotment has been spread, spread out to the state in an effort for folks that maybe had, attended a big gathering this week during Christmas, and they may have been exposed, or they're feeling symptomatic, and they're planning on doing something this weekend, to celebrate this holiday. The idea really is not for everybody to get one, but the idea is for if you feel like you need a test because you're not feeling well, or you've been exposed, or you're trying to protect someone that you're going to spend time with, then come up and take the test, or get the test. But if not, don't. And the last part of that is that they're setting up a standalone testing, similar to what they had down in Old Sabre, that's going to be set up again. They just don't have a time that that's going to be set up at, and that's something that just developed last week too. So the testing, while it's behind where we'd like it to be, it's becoming more available now, so.
So we're going to get something from the state and the federal government?
What, what, what the town is going to receive on, hopefully Thursday, it's all very fluid, I mean, this, this was yesterday at 11 o'clock, they announced this. So hopefully Thursday morning, we will receive 600 test kits. Thursday evening, we will distribute those to as many people as come and get them, until they run out. And then next week, the same thing will happen with masks. And then the following week, the federal government, I expect, I, that's not, nothing is written in stone on that, but I expect the federal government will distribute a bunch of kits to each, to the state, and the state will distribute them to the town the same way that this is happening. So I expect that the same thing will happen in a few weeks, and by then, I am hopeful that the testing facility will be set up and running down in Old Sabre, down at the Sabre Point, the same place it was last time. Anything else?
How much money are we receiving in federal, in American?
We've gotten 698 now, and we will receive another 698 when the second distribution comes in.
Do you hear anything back from the solar company?
Just from what we talked about last meeting, I have not, I've not gotten a contract yet, no.
On the subject of this social services position, talking about funding, is there going to be a sunset provision on that, or is it all of a sudden going to be something where, geez, this is working so good, let's keep it going and raise our taxes and spend more on it?
Well, we are funded for four years. At the end of that time, we, we don't have funding, the town has a voice as to whether or not we continue it or not. Anything else?
Is that social services, is that the one by the elementary school?
Yes, that's over at Tri-Town, yeah.
So they got to have some standard of funding already?
Well, we, we fund it now. Well, we fund a part-time, part-time position, we share that worker with Chester. But it's, it's nowhere near the amount of services that are needed right now, so I'd like to get that through as quickly as we can.
If I recall, last year's budget, they came looking for a lot more money than we allotted.
Different, different, that's Tri-Town Youth Services.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We have our own, we have our own social services worker who works on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
All right, sorry.
Tri-Town Youth Services has, they have their own counseling as well, but they're funded differently. And you're correct, we did not-
Yeah.
...provide what they asked for, in an effort to, to keep down the taxes. Anything else? Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is appointments, and the first group on that, really the only thing we're going to act on here, is Connecticut Sustainability Committee. We have Michelle Giddens, Lindsay Gustafson, and Sarah Connor, have all been attending sustainability meetings for some time, they've begun to participate, so have asked to be appointed to the commission, so I'd like very much if you guys would consider that.
I'll make a motion for Michelle M. Giddens, Lindsay Taylor Gustafson, and Sarah Elizabeth Connor to serve on the Connecticut CT Sustainable Committee.
I second that.
Any conversations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, board of finance, we heard from Mr. Alexander a little bit earlier, just based on the conversation with, with Amy and the normal process that we have gone through for most of our appointments, we put her on the agenda, knowing that the longtime board member's health has required her to resign. Lori Corret has finally decided that she, she cannot no longer participate, which was anticipated, but not, not at all-
Wanted.
Wanted. She submitted her resignation today, but she and I spoke, and then she was going to, she was trying to submit it for the last week, but when we knew that was coming, we had spoken to Jackie Calamari, you guys, we spoke about this a little bit, and she's more than capable and, and willing, and very interested in serving. Because of the process, the statute very clearly states that the board of finance schedules a special meeting for the purpose, the sole purpose of appointing the replacement for the vacancy. So what we can do is, we can recommend at tonight's meeting that they consider Jackie Calamari, and, and move forward with that, whether they schedule a special meeting sometime in the next month, or they wait and schedule a special meeting prior to their next meeting, however they want to do that, that's up to them to do.
Do we need a motion for us to make a recommendation, or no? That comes right on here?
I think if we're, it's, it's, it's selectmen's recommendations, so I think it'd be, it wouldn't be inappropriate for us to, to vote to do that, I guess.
I'll make a motion to authorize the selectmen to make a recommendation for Jacqueline G. Calamari to the board of finance.
I second that motion.
Conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. The next item on the agenda is the citizens' bank property and tax concerns. We have a relatively new resident, I don't know when you guys moved into town. Oh, one year ago, great. And Mark Marino is interested in purchasing the citizens' bank. He's approached the town to ask for some sort of tax relief, because the, the property is taxed as a bank, which is one of the higher tax, and Greg might or might not know this, but one of the higher tax rates for properties. Over the past two years, I personally have spoken to two banks, once, one a national bank and one a local bank. The national bank, I wasn't able to get too high up, but I always did speak- I wasn't able to get too high up, but I always did speak to an officer. I spoke with Guildford Savings Bank president. I spoke with Hartford Hospital to try to get some people into that building. There was no interest by any of the banks, nor the hospital. I think that we need, we need to understand that it's probably not going to be a bank. As that moves forward, and as the bank has reduced the price of the purchase of that property, we've been getting more and more interest from folks that want to do things that don't fit into the zoning, don't fit into the downtown nature of that property. But the price has been reduced to a point where it's, it's, it's going to get, it's going to get active, it's going to get sold. Mr. Marino approached me and has some thoughts that I think are, that fit right into our economic development and our plan of conservation development. And the process for a tax relief or tax abatement is such that we can't really act on it right now, but he wants to talk to us a little bit about it, give us his vision, and come up and, and we can have a little bit more of a conversation and introduce it to the board and to the public. So Mark, if you want to have the floor?
Thank you, Angus. My wife, Teri, and I are new to Deep River, but we're very familiar with Deep River. We raised five children in Chester, so we've been in this area for a long time. We left after, you know, our children were growing on, and we decided to downsize in Farmington. Found very quickly that, you know, we love the small town. So we wanted to come back. We took a good, hard look at Essex, Chester, Deep River, you know, this whole area, and decided to come to Deep River. Think that Deep River has a lot to offer. And in my opinion, there's some disconnects. Where 141 is compared to 39, which is the old laundry toy factory.
Oh, okay.
The town's, there's a space. The town is not connected. So I've decided I want, I'm going to buy both 39 and 141. And if we do the right things to both those facilities, we could connect the town, we could go for economic development. I'm not looking for, I'm not looking to do storage facilities and those kind of things. I think this town, and again, you've got Essex and Chester, and for lack of better words, Deep River's a stepchild. This town needs a high-end restaurant to draw people. It needs more shops. It needs offices. It needs, it needs a draw for people to come to this town. And those two buildings being on Main Street, if they're done properly, we can connect the town together. If the economic development planning's going, and get, I think also, once we do a facelift on 39 and 141, the owners of the other buildings in Deep River, I'm hoping would go, let's follow suit. Let's do facelifts. Facelifts don't cost a lot of money, but we could push this town up to come through, and people go, oh my God, what a great town, you know? I'm even thinking things like, we have a brewery, which is cool, but it's off Main Street. If that brewery was brought up onto Main Street, which very easily 39, and I don't know what their situation, I don't think, whatever it is, but if that was brought up to 39, beautiful building. This year is going to be 2022, it's going to be 100 years old. Here, we have a building that we could do 100-year renovation, make it beautiful, bring something like a brewery or something that's going to bring people to town.
That building has a lot of, a lot of history also.
Ton of history.
And I would hope that it's quite my laundry, but I mean, even prior to that, you know, there is, I would hope that you was the owner of that building.
I've done all the research. It does. And I think if we could facelift those two facilities, bring the right projects in, and that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking, it'd be very easy to turn them into, you know, storage facilities and things. Town doesn't want it. It's not what we need, not for a town. And if we do it right, and we work together, I think we're going to have, I think we'll really change the town.
Yeah, I like the idea. It does extend, it extends the commercial aspect of the Main Street proper right here. And it does, that gets us closer to connecting to, you know, 39 or Kirtland Street at least, you know, let's just keep on going on Main Street. And it's an interesting, the commercial part of it has a lot of folks living here. And there will continue to be on either side, a lot of folks living on Main Street. But that, that part of Main Street is, has potential, and it has changed a lot over 20 years, 30 years, for the better. And 40 years, 50 years, it's been a long time. But it's gotten better. And folks like you coming in and wanting to invest is something that we all are looking for. So, you know, I'd like to think that we can, we can work with you, we'll get advice from council as to how to proceed. As we've, as we've indicated in our conversations, Board of Selectmen doesn't have the ability to grant that. That's the legislative body, which is a town meeting. So I think we work together to put whatever we're going to together and bring it to a town meeting. And, you know, I know you've probably got some time constraints on the purchase and things like that, so we would do to work with you as much as we can to get that done.
Exactly. And just to make it clear, I'm purchasing the properties either way. Depending on how we can work, depends on what we do with them. And, you know, it's a no-brainer. If we can't get the taxes in line, I can't make, I can't get a restaurant to pay those kinds of numbers, to put a restaurant in shops and things like that. We're going to have to go for much higher income in those things to make a cash flow. So if we work together, I would love to do the restaurants and the shops. I mean, it'll connect, especially coming into town from Chester. 39 is the first building coming into town, and it's an eyesore. Make it beautiful, make it nice, now we start our own.
Put all those sidewalks in all the way out that way.
Yep.
I didn't realize that, you know, the bank buildings were taxed at a higher rate than a regular commercial building.
They did, I.
Design advisors.
And it, to me, it's, for lack of a better term, a no-brainer, that it has to be adjusted down to what it needs to be to do something other than.
Make it profitable for everybody.
Yeah, it's got to, it's got to work financially for everybody.
For economic development, that's what the town.
Yep.
I think both those buildings, they both have city sewer, they both have access to city water, I'm pretty sure there's gas on that road as well. And especially with the bank, if you eliminated that drive-through, you could extend your parking and fit anybody.
I think it would be a plus.
Yeah.
It would be a plus for the town.
Could even bring sidewalks from the sidewalk to the building, and maybe even some lower buildings for shops. In other words, need to get the town to start getting bustling, get the people to come, coming for different events. You know, all the things that we see some of the other surrounding towns, we can do it very easily. It just needs teamwork.
Yep. Oh, yeah. I mean, one of the things that the town worked for us so hard is to get these sidewalks in, and it is a walking town. You can't walk from one end to the other, just where are you going? You know? So, and that's where you need the investment, beyond what the town can do. The town can't buy and develop properties. We need the right investors. And I'm hopeful that we can have a long, this could be the beginning of a long, beautiful friendship.
Well, if Teri and I are willing to invest, who wants to know? That's all.
Well, let's continue to talk about it.
No, I'm good. Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
That's for sure. Okay, that's, that's our, that's our agenda, so happy Christmas to all, and happy New Year. We'll see you all next year.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance, regular December 2021, the meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. And you'll note that we're all wearing, all wearing masks. We are back to mask-wearing. So let's stay with our sort of regular agenda, which would be approval of the minutes from December, well, November, is our date of our meeting?
November.
November, November meeting, that is fine. All those who have read and wish to move forward from the minutes, because I have a.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from the November 2021 meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, no, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
The next item would be, Board, members of the public. Does anyone wish to say anything from the public? Audience of citizens, hearing none. While I see citizens, they will remain silent. Excellent. Let us move on. I say excellent. It was just meant that we've got some momentum in the meeting. It was not meant for any comments from those who are present. Let's then move to, Tommy, can you share our account?
Yeah, sure. I'll start with the town deposit accounts, and I'll start with the general fund accounts. And if you look right now, the total balance in our general fund account is $433,678.84. That is about $897,821 less than last month. I made three transfers in the last month, one on November 26 for $250,000, one for December 3 for $700,000, and one on December 9 for $450,000, for a total of $1,400,000. That's coming from our Liberty Bank Municipal Sweep Money Market account, and goes into our Citizens Bank General Fund. We have received some tax monies. When I was talking to Kathy today, on 12/22, we received $213,173 via checks, and on 12/23, we received $449,000 via wire transfers. So we've received $662,173 from that source, from tax monies already. And if you look at the bottom on total balances, we're at $6,587,738. That is about $855,509 less than where we were last month. We're at $7,443,247. But if you look at last year at this time, on 12/21/2020, our total balances were $529,377. So we're actually up, we have $1,556,361 more than we did last year. But if you want to be realistic about this, we take the ARC funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which were $657,595 away from that. And then more realistically, our balance is $898,765 more than what we had last year at this time. And for those of you here, Jackie, Ray, the American Rescue Plan Act, that's called ARP funds that we received, we received half of that, those funds. That's actually funds that are being used to help businesses or whatever, who maybe lost money from the pandemic. So every, every town has received funding. As I said, we just received half of that. So right now, that account opened up in July. And it is, we can get interest on that, that money. So we've accumulated $141,073 in interest since we opened, opened that account, interest rate of 0.08%. And I have no idea what we'll receive the other half, but this is what we have right now. Our ECS monies received, that's Education Equalization Grants monies, we were earmarked, earmarked to receive $1,662,870 the last year. Right now, our next payment will be a quarter of that, which is due January 29 of 2022, $417,864. We did make a payment on our Kirtland River Street sewer project with the USDA. That was made on December 17, automatic debit to our general fund account. It was $118,379. That is, that was our sixth payment out of 40. It goes from 2016 to 2055. Our principal balance now, after making that sixth payment, is gone, down from 2009, 10, I'm sorry, $2,910,000. That was the original amount, principal amount. Now it's down to $2,648,926. So we've reduced that principal by $269,073 in the last six payments. When we make the payment of, again, $118,379, $47,799 is principal, and $70,579 is interest. So that is it as far as the deposit accounts, unless anyone has any questions. Otherwise, I'm going to go into a meeting that we actually had with the Essex Financial Services. I did.
I'm going to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. You said ask questions. It is not asking a question. I'm going to say something, you're going to say, you're going to confirm whether it makes any sense. Using your numbers at the bottom, and taking out the American Rescue Plan, we have about, what was your number, about $825,000 more at this time, this year than we had last?
Yes.
Okay? Now, that is a very weak surrogate for the potential surplus that we ended last year, because there's all the other accounts that are contributing to that. And that sort of goes, the amount of time Angus and I have spent together is a lot. But did I ask a question? Do you have any idea when the audit will be done?
January is what they promised.
January they promised, okay. Great. That number is just, it's complimentary to the kind of.
It's higher than I think we would like.
It's higher. There should be some noise in our chat, so it just seems to be.
What is the pile on your question? If you know, if you went that far in depth, what is the difference? What's making up that $850,000 that we're ahead this year?
Well, that's a synopsis. That's everything together. I mean, it's all of our, all of our funds.
And it's not, it's not like we didn't get an extra school.
No, 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 no.
My hint is it's a surplus that we finished last year, but again, that's a weak hint.
Yep.
If you're comparing what we had last year to what we had this year, the surplus that we did not spend last year would contribute much. Some of that difference is what I'm thinking of. Okay, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Oh, it's fine. I was just going to go on to the meeting that we had with the Essex Financial Services regarding the, our town and Deep River employees and volunteer firefighters meeting. That was actually held on December 15, so it was here at the town hall at 9:00 in the morning. Those in attendance, we had the investment advisors from Essex Financial, James Sullivan, and David Lemay, and Angus, and Bud, and Pete Lewis, myself. We had no representative from the fire department. I did speak to James Sullivan today, just to kind of review a couple of, a couple of things that we had discussed. And I wish, you know, you too, since you were at the meeting, so say whatever you want. I appreciate that. I know, Angus, you had signed off on the agreement with the asset reallocation. What that is, is we've decided that 65% of all the assets in the, in the plan are made up of equities or stock, and 35% are made up of bond funds. And we want to stay within, within that range. Anything on that you guys?
No, that's fine. You know, because we've had a number of large withdrawals from the, that you would think, what was explained to us was, you would, we would, it would be intuitive to think that as, as funds were withdrawn, they would come equally out of stocks, bonds, and everything would share in that, in that reduction. That's not the case. It kind of just comes out of some, some sort of formula. But we were getting heavy on stocks to a point where it was noticeable to the managers. And they, the allocation really, we're still heavy on stocks, but we're not outside of the scope that Tom just described of 65 to 35 as opposed to 80. We were not yet 80 yet, but we were in the 70s, and it was pushing. We were, we were not yet eighty yet, but we were in the seventies, and it was pushing up a little too high. It's a little too risky.
Mm-hmm.
The interesting part of it for me is, well, stocks have been doing gangbusters, so the fund has been doing better. But it's too risky, we want to keep it back where we want to be.
Yeah, the return, I, I think he said about thirteen, thirteen percent, but I don't remember that. In fact, if I, if you look at this, uh, the current plan overview, that, the form that I, uh, handed out, you'll see, um, back on twelve thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, our plan assets, uh, we had three million, eight fifty-eight, oh fifty-eight. Uh, and you see how that was broken down between the, uh, Deep River, uh, firefighters and the employees. Now you look at twelve thirty-one, twenty-one, um, we're at one million, seven fifteen, three ninety-nine. So because of a couple of significant, uh, people that have retired, uh, a lot of the money has been withdrawn from, from, uh, this plan. And so it shows you that now we have, um, a million, twenty-seven thousand, one ninety-four for the employees and six eighty-eight, two oh five for the, the firefighters. So, um, and, uh, another one, another topic that we discussed was setting up a Zoom meeting between, uh, participants of the program for education purposes. Um, and when I spoke to, uh, James, he mentioned, uh, maybe getting a, um, email distribution list that she could, uh, set up with a link, um, and he will be the, the host, and he will be the one that actually participates in that, that, uh, the training program. But it's really to let, uh, you know, I mean, anyway, even people here at this, this, this table, I mean, we don't, you know, as far as retirement funds, uh, a lot of times we, we don't, you know, we just don't know what to do with, with those monies. So hopefully that, uh, if they set up some sort of a Zoom meeting, uh, they'll be able to, uh, speak to, uh, James and, uh, and he can kind of, you know, explain, uh, some of the process.
If you ask James to send, uh, a note to our office, we could probably put that list together for him.
Okay.
At the risk of being contrarian, I did not think it was a Zoom meeting.
When we spoke, it was not. It was a meeting up in the auditorium.
Oh, would you rather have that?
I, I think that would be a.
In person?
Best way to begin.
Initially.
Okay.
My concern is that we, the town, we as citizens are putting a substantial amount of dollars away for these folks' retirement. I'm not sure that we, these folks, uh, understand or appreciate what they have. And there's a, we have, in today's world, we put a lot of responsibility in retirement on individuals. And I think we have an obligation to help those fellows, people who work for us, to understand that responsibility and get where they want to get.
Okay, I will.
And I'm not sure that COVID is going to allow for that, a large gathering, but, but, you know, let's see, let's see.
Yeah, that's correct. COVID is not still a risk.
Because I know there was, when we met, we were thinking even having that, uh, meeting, in-person meeting or Zoom meeting in sometime in January.
Yeah.
So I don't, uh, unless you want that changed, uh, I'll call.
No, I think that's good. Have, have, reach out to us.
Okay.
The very least, we can, uh, we can get him that list, so we can communicate with them. And we can do the same thing with that list to, to set up a meeting.
Okay. Um, in addition to that, we were discussed having, uh, setting up a meeting with the actuary, uh, Matt Cecilia, um, regarding the pension services, uh, because he's actually, should, he'll be able to help in the budget process on, and, uh, giving us an amount or obligation with, with the town can actually, or should be putting into the.
He does that, uh, every year.
So, uh, and he, uh, he has already emailed Matt to, uh, actually, I don't know, would he be contacting you, Angus, or?
Yeah, I, I reached out to Matt myself.
Oh, you did?
And, uh, he's on vacation until, until next year.
Okay.
Now, one compliment, Tom, and actually, we'll go slightly out of order since Tom has started the conversation. One of the things that we will, we were going to chat about under selectmen's representation is somehow we did not put the right number for the town's ob, pension obligation in our budget. It is about, and this is one of the conversations we will have, thirty to forty thousand dollars too low. We will have, we, the board will have to listen to that, we, the board will have to agree to go to a public hearing to adjust our budget to get those dollars. Um, so.
Okay, so Angus, you have actually, uh, emailed something to, to Matt?
Matt, yeah.
So he'll be in contact with you?
So he gets back, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll let, uh, James know about that, too. He's on vacation.
Just because, Tom, we're already, several years ago, Angus and I met with Matt, and we made an intuitive decision, intuitive, we made a decision and a recommendation to this board that we would, there was an underfunding of our pension plan, set out, identified by the auditors at prior time.
Yeah.
And we set out to eliminate that underfunding.
Yes.
And so this mystery why we are.
It was, it was up to pure communications during the budget process. Now, I don't understand why Essex Savings Bank is saying that we are, that we are lower than we should be, um, other than the fact that we've had a couple, more than a couple significant withdrawals from it. Um, and that, that I'm going to assume is, needs to, is going to impact how much we need to contribute.
You mean Essex Financial?
Essex Financial, yes, sorry about that, Essex Financial. Um, that there are two separate issues that, that are, that are at play. James wants us to, James Sullivan wants us to speak with Matt Cecilia about the plan as a whole. What Bud was just referring to was an error that was made. Um, and I'm going to say through my office and my communications with the, the pension service as to how much we should have contributed in this current budget to the pension fund to keep it on the plan that, that, that we had set forth to get the funding back to where it needed to be, um, because it had been historically underfunded, uh, for a good long time. And we had been working on that, and we were, actually, every budget year, we, we said that's what we were doing. Uh, this is purely, uh, a mistake. I, I can't identify how or where, but there was, you know, there was some communication breakdown in how much we were supposed to invest. Um, we need to now, uh, put that, get ourselves where we're supposed to be.
I, I know, I know the difference between a private pension and a municipality pensions. And I'm concerned for the resident, for the employees that we have here in the town. Now, looking in two thousand nineteen, we had three point three million. In two thousand twenty-one, we have a million. It's two point three million dollars. That's a lot of pension money that was taken out.
Yeah.
My concern is for our employees that work for us here. A million dollars isn't going to go very far with the number of employees that we have here. Well, remember, we changed plans, I'm not sure I remember what year. There were some employees, historical employees, we switched to a, a defined benefit. We switched to a defined contribution. All new employees are in the defined contribution.
That's right.
But it's still, it's still.
No.
A very low number. It's a low number, but we don't have many in, left in the plan.
Well, yeah, that's, I was going to say.
One of our older employees have done exactly what they're supposed to do.
They do, but it's not younger.
It's a younger group that's in that plan, okay.
But there's still, I mean, Dwayne, your concern is a hundred percent.
It's just that the, where I come from, my, my life as a trustee on my pension plan, we have a lot more restrictions than what we have here, which I found out last year with the auditors. But looking at this number here scares me for far town.
It seems to be lower than what it should.
Yeah. We have, whether it's a defined contribution or defined benefit plan, no matter what, it seems very low.
Well, that's, that's the thing. This number does not reflect the defined benefit plan. This is strictly the pension plan.
Yep.
Which is, uh, had a, been limiting number of our employees. Uh, but that is not in any way meant to dismiss your concern. We share your concern, and that's why we're having this conversation now.
Tom, how many employees are actually, uh?
I don't have that number, not on top of my head. I can get it for you tomorrow.
Oh, that's okay, I just.
I, I just want to make sure, as, as our time here as being elected officials, that we're doing our diligence and our official responsibility to, to the people. That's my concern.
It should be your concern, it is our concern, that's why we have worked so hard. And our budget has reflected in the past five years that we are, we have been contributing more to the pension fund in order to properly fund it. Um, we just, there was an error this year. That was our intent this year, we thought we were doing it this year. But, um, we just discovered last month that we had not, so.
Okay.
Because we're getting ready to make that payment, and that's how we discovered it.
And the last thing, we did set up a, uh, a meeting in the future, but I, we've been trying to do this every, at least every four months. Um, and, you know, if you want to go to three months, we can do that, or every four months. So if we're doing it every four months, I'm, I'm looking toward April, um, as another, uh, time to meet.
Yeah, I think quarterly is a good idea.
You want quarterly instead of, uh?
Yeah, I think so.
Every four months, so probably like March, I think, next meeting. Okay. Did you, uh, you know, as far as nine o'clock in the morning, uh, on a Wednesday?
Works for me.
Is that, I'll kind of.
Now that you're retired.
I'll throw that. I'll throw, I'll throw that.
It works for me as long as it works for Bud and for the other, other agencies that need to be there.
Okay. So that's all we have.
All right, uh, let's deal with two of the Board of Finance issue, the simplest being, Joyce has emailed to each of you a tentative or a proposed list of meetings for next year. Um, not particularly exciting. We will meet, as all those who came before us, on the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Bud, are you going out of order?
Uh, was there an order that this fitted to?
Yeah, the next, um, item on the agenda is recommendation of selectmen in action.
Well, then I am going out of order. I was going to internal, uh, Board of Finance issues, okay? And that, for instance, doesn't seem like we need a recommendation from the Board of Finance to, uh, Board of Selectmen to figure out what our meetings are. Uh, but I, the second item is every Tuesday in March and April would be our workshop meetings. And we begin that at seven o'clock. Now, here's my, and we, note the date of March. We have had conversations from time to time that we should start before March, that we feel rushed. Um, and anyone should participate. Generally, Angus, we cancel that meeting, those meetings that we do too early because you don't have adequate information. Do you think March is the right, anybody participate? Is March still the right time to start?
If you're asking me, I think March one is a fine time to start. I, I want to, I'm starting, we've already begun collecting information from different departments. I'm starting earlier, um, and hopefully we can do a better job getting ourselves organized, um, to, uh, to bring the budget to you.
And you can talk about the backend. We have had troubles. We have had troubles, is a good word, uh, due to the need to print the, for, print this budget or some portion of it. In April, we have a town meeting scheduled for, which is by ordinance, but we have to do it scheduled by.
Sunday is the third Monday in May.
Yeah.
Is our, is by ordinance, that's when we have to have our meeting.
That's when we have the town meeting, or don't, do we publish for the public hearing?
The, the public hearing is prior to that, we publish for that as well.
Okay. And we've had trouble getting it into the local paper, correct?
Yes.
Do we need, again, there's the question, do we need to start?
No, the troubles are not getting it into the paper. The troubles are the published dates. Um, and the number, and, and the, the, the way the ordinance reads, and I, I don't have it memorized, but it reads, you can't have a public hearing in a certain time. It has to be a certain number of days prior to, but not too many people.
No less than fourteen.
No less than, yeah, so the public hearing.
The public hearing.
Yeah, not the public, not the publication, but the public hearing.
Within five days, but because it's on a Monday, we can't.
And that's, that's the problem, because the, the meeting is always scheduled on a Monday.
Correct.
So we've got to, what we've had to do in the past two years is push the public hearing date back a week, or, or, you know, backwards a week. So there's a little more of a separation. And, um, and I'm not sure if that has something to do with calendar or with paper or what it is, but we, we recognize it after having two years in a row. We recognize it now, and we'll build our schedule.
That's correct. So we actually published last year a budget that we decided to send to the town, but it wasn't yet our final. Where I go back to.
Because we hadn't had our last Board of Finance.
Right. So again, I, as I offer is, should we start earlier? And we have not been too successful in starting much.
Well, I think the important part is to, uh, is to make sure that we finish, and we have to back the calendar out and, and make sure that we can get this scheduled. And we can do that tomorrow morning. Um, we'll get a look at the calendar, go from May twenty-fourth or whatever that third Monday is, and back ourselves out.
Okay.
So if you guys want to hold off on your workshop schedule, um, we can talk about that next month.
Well, I, I'm, I'm resistant to it, because I think Joyce has reminded me it needs to be presented to the town clerk by a date. Certainly, we're, we're.
The workshops, they're.
It seems to me we can always change it in the, in the future, but we do need to present to the town clerk.
The only thing that, that gets in the way with our Tuesday nights, and I think the last few years we've done, no, we've done Tuesdays, is that is the same night as the Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, so a couple of, a couple of meetings every month.
That's right, some Board of Selectmen would interfere with that.
Yeah. Not all, I mean, maybe twice, and we'd have to look at the calendar in March and see when the, uh.
Joyce, that's right. The Board of Finance would be meeting on one of those Tuesdays, okay?
No, the Board of Finance, um, isn't listed in the workshops.
No, I wouldn't think it would be. Um, let's see, so we've got selectmen's meetings on the ninth and the twenty-third.
And I'm sure we have.
Oh, wait, no, that's twenty-twenty-one.
We have one on the twenty-second.
Eighth and the twenty-second, so there are two meetings that there will be confliction.
Correct.
No, one meeting that there will be conflict. The eighth and the twenty-second, and there's a, there's a, the twenty-second is not scheduled here. There's a week, there's a two-week interval.
Why? Because that's our meeting, I assume, right?
Yes, yes, that's our regular meeting.
The eighth and the twelfth of April.
Yep, okay.
March eighth and April.
So if we, if you want to schedule, reschedule those to the following Wednesday, that's fine.
Board, what do you think? Do you want to switch, switch to a Wednesday on those?
Just make them Tuesday.
That's better for me.
Tuesday.
On which?
Wednesdays are better, I have a class on Tuesdays.
Wednesdays are not good at all. I don't know.
My suggestion is Tuesday is our, our traditional number, so it's the timing.
I still think we can get things done over the, maybe we can, just as we have done in the past.
That's correct. All right. So there, do we have to vote on that, Joyce, or can we just nod that they are our traditional numbers and you can file them with the town clerk? We'll change them as.
Do you need to make a motion and vote on it?
No, we have to make a vote, okay. Could I have a motion to vote on the, uh, schedule for our year two thousand twenty-two meetings as presented by Joyce and sent to all of us?
I move that we accept the calendar presented by Joyce for our scheduled meetings for twenty-twenty, what are we, in twenty-twenty-one?
Well, we are now, but we will be in twenty-twenty-two.
Two more days.
Yeah, a couple more days, okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those, John with us now, all those in favor?
Yes, sir.
Please say aye. All right, cool.
Aye.
All right, thank you, John. All right. Now, the next one that I would like to call a Board of Finance internal moment is that we have had a resignation on our board, and we need to consider a replacement. Now, uh, and I shall, uh, a replacement. It gets a little confusing, but today Angus and others read state statutes on how the Board of Finance should go about appointing, or a, uh, a replacement should be on the Board of Finance. And I shall read to you what the state legislation says the Board of Finance must do. I'm blocking up, so stay with it.
You or your glasses?
Sometimes they're hard to tell the difference. Sometimes one blames it on the other. Uh, okay, here we are. Um, there you go. A dramatic reading by Bud Ekinoff. Uh, here we go. And while there are plenty of places, I am going to go to the statute.
Seven, three, four, four, seven, three.
Seven dash three, four, three.
Yes. And while there's a summary.
It's the bottom page, so it just.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, here it is. Filling of vacancies. In case of a, a vacancy. In case of a, a vacancy in the membership of the Board of Finance, unless otherwise provided by charter or special act, the remaining members of the board shall, at a special meeting called by the chairman for that purpose, by a majority vote, appoint a successor, who shall serve until the next town election and until a successor is elected and is qualified. At the next town election, following the occurrence of such vacancy, the elector shall elect a successor to fill the vacancy for the unexpired portion of the term, uh, and the office to be filled shall be designated by the official ballot, in other words, to be, to fill vacancy for. I do not know, remember what Laurie's appointment is worth, nor do I think it's important to the moment.
No, it, the appointment will run for, for two years, the next, the next municipal election.
Well, goes to the next municipal election, and then that, whoever is elected would fill out.
Fifty.
Would fill out the rest of Laurie's terms, the way I'm reading it. Which I do not know, which I do not know how long it is.
I don't either, but, um.
It's four, four years, you know, and I came in at the same time.
So it would be two years, so the, the answer is two years, okay, if you're making, go. All right, Board of Finance, what, uh, Will, let us now turn to the selectman who has been thinking about this for quite some time. Do you wish to offer us any direction?
I would not suggest quite some time, but, um, we, once we learned the statute, um, and thank you to Mr. Alexander for pointing it out to us, uh, we determined at, at tonight's meeting that we would recommend, and we voted unanimously to recommend Jackie Calamari to you guys for your consideration. We can't appoint, but we, and I don't know whether that recommendation holds any water, but as, as the work that we've done, um, we determined to, to recommend to you that you consider Jackie for that position.
Would you comment on, if you wish? We put people up to run for various offices, Board of Selectmen, Board of, Board of Finance, based on different party affiliation. Does that factor into recommendations or something the board should consider?
Traditionally, Duke River has held that if a, if a vacancy is, uh, is created, that that vacancy be filled by someone from the same party. It's not, I don't believe that that's law in this particular case, but it is, it is what we have held to.
Board of Finance, what would you like to do? Uh, we, we will call a special meeting, and we can do that by Zoom, and it should, sometime in the near future. We could wait till fifteen minutes before our next meeting and do that. Does anyone have any preference? Or, and/or, does the Board of Finance wish to interview candidates? Does the selection committee on their own, anyone have any thoughts?
I do.
You do?
I would not like to wait until the next meeting, fifteen minutes before, I think that's unfair to candidates in general. I would like to talk with Jackie and, and, and any candidate, in fact. Um, and I would like to see us do a special meeting at some point in the not-too-distant future, I would hope. Those are my thoughts.
Carmella, any thoughts?
I'm just curious about the processing of doing that. This is my first experience with it, and is a candidate selected because they're from a, a general population? Is a candidate selected because an announcement's been put out that there is an opening and who's interested come forward? Um, I, I don't understand how that goes about, I don't know, understand how that happens.
I generally think the answer is yes to all those, but I'm going to have to go back to Angus to, while he was uncomfortable with my thinking about it first of all, he has been thinking about it, which is the reference, so.
Yeah, we, we've known that Laurie, um, was considering resigning for quite some time. She was hopeful that she was not going to, but in, in the process of that, we reached out. Uh, Jackie had expressed interest, um, much earlier, before there was a vacancy. And, uh, we spoke with Jackie, Bud and I sat down with Jackie.
Several times.
Several times. Um, and she's of the, the party that, that we need, that Laurie is. And we determined, based on Jackie's, uh, experience and qualifications, that she would be the perfect candidate to, to fill that spot. Before, before we learned that it was a Board of Finance decision, the Board of Selectmen, um, had conversations about it, and were prepared to make that appointment tonight, but, um, but are not able to based on statute. So. I would suggest that if, if you wanted to put out a general population request, then that would go through the Democratic Town Committee. And I, Jackie, I, I want, I can't say for certain, but I think that that might have, not a, not a search, but there might have been a conversation at, at, at the Town Committee level. I think so, yeah.
Carmella, do you wish to continue your question?
No, I, I, my past experience was that, uh, other towns, when they had an absence or an open seat, it went to the town committees to come forth with candidates, um, but we're a small town, and it may be a different process.
That is what happened.
That used, that used to happen back.
I would suggest that that did happen, we did, we did, in fact, the Town Committee did, in fact, discuss Jackie, and I'm not sure if, you came to a meeting, I don't remember, but I know that we did have the conversation at the Town Committee level, back when Laurie was first considering resigning.
And I can say that the town clerk actually sends a note out to both chairman and both parties.
Very nice.
So that they know, they're aware of the opening that has been filed.
Yep.
Excellent. Yeah.
That's correct.
And in your monthly, your quarterly bulletin, you also listed a vacancy, so, um, so I'm sort of leaning towards yes, it has been put out to the public. Others have come forward, Angus and others interviewed some others, so. Uh, John, you were silent, do you wish to, uh, participate in this conversation? Are you comfortable with or uncomfortable with the, the recommendation?
Listening in carefully. Not sure yet.
When did, when did Laurie officially?
Her resignation, we spoke last week, but her resignation was dropped off this afternoon. On side note, I would like to put together a, and Carmella, I'll probably talk with you, but a proclamation thanking her for her service to the town.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yeah. All right, Board of Finance, pick up some momentum here. Uh, we have some momentum to fill our vacancy sooner than later, that is the adequate quote. Uh, what I do not have from you yet is how you wish to go about deciding on that. Selectmen have spent time doing that, it appears that is now our obligation. Do you wish to set up a opportunity to talk with others, put forth other names, prior to actually having a special meeting? Carmella?
No, I don't. I don't know that there's a rush of candidates to fill seats on any of the town committees, so for the people who volunteer to do those jobs, I give them a lot of credit, a lot of, um, plaudits for doing that.
Okay.
And if our town, if our selectmen feel that this is a good choice, then I'm comfortable with it, I just didn't understand the processing of it.
And that's the question that I'm asking you, are you comfortable with the process? If you're not, if we are going to be deciders, you need to be comfortable with the process, okay? Russell, are you, uh, comfortable with the process, or wish to?
I, I am, because I, I, I know Jackie a little bit, and more importantly, I know her business background, uh, which is very appropriate, and, uh, missing Laurie, who, uh, I worked with often. They're big shoes to fill, she was a big part of this board, and she did a lot of work. She certainly deserves any of the accolades that might come her way. But we have, we have a good hand.
I don't have a problem with, with the process, I just think, I'm, I'm looking at the, I was looking at the statute, the section seven, three, four, three.
Yep.
And it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be, um, at a special meeting called for that purpose, that was the clause, in the statute that, right? This was, this was a regular Board of Finance meeting.
We could have to deny, that is correct, we have to have a special meeting.
Right, so, yeah, that, that's where I just want to follow up on and check on that, that's, but other than that, I don't, you know, per the appointment of a, you know, somebody, I don't have a problem with that, that part of it, should be at a special meeting for that purpose.
Okay.
Could anyone do January 4th, which is a Tuesday?
In the evening, certainly.
Yes.
Well, look at me.
Did you, did you hear that, John?
And we will.
January 4th?
Yep, and we will zoom that.
Yep.
Okay. And it's the only item on the agenda. Now, do you wish?
Seven, three, four, three, would you just meet those requirements, because they're so statute.
Yep, that's what we're working on, John.
Yep. Yeah, no, fine.
Uh, uh, Jackie, are you with us?
I couldn't be there.
I will check on that.
We're leaning towards a yes.
For a special meeting.
I'm thinking that.
I was, I'm sorry, I was just talking with Joyce, um, as far as I know, for the special meeting, you, just like this meeting, you need twenty-four hours' notice for that meeting. I will, I'm fairly confident that that's the case with this, so it's January 4th, should be fine. If it may, if this, if the law says you need five days or something like that, it might get pushed back, but. People, people may want to talk to you.
Sure.
Uh, everyone probably wants to talk to you. And, and so if you could come for, I don't know, and, and I'm just, this is off the top of my head, half an hour. And then we can, we can decide.
It should be a sure meeting, I would imagine.
Yeah, I would think so too, John. Um, John, one of the things that I need to know, though, if we're going to do this via Zoom, well, that needs to be part of the notice.
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, normally you probably would include Zoom as part of it, I just, I, I don't know. I'm just speaking from my own personal experience recently, um, there's, there's a significant number of people that seem to be coming down with, uh, COVID right now.
Yes, that's right.
Right, that's, that's why I'm not there this evening, just because of that, okay? Because I was, I don't have it myself, but I was around people that do have it, yeah.
Man, that's a, your, your, your avoidance of us is, is appreciated, but, um.
Yeah.
But we have not been, we've been doing in-person meetings, and we have not been noticing the Zoom, because.
Yeah, so, so I think, I think if you were to put a meeting up for notice, just as, out of an abundance of caution, like in the current environment, it might be not a bad idea to include a Zoom aspect to it, yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Now, question I have is, does the board, during that Zoom meeting, wish to go into executive session and, in essence, ask Jackie questions?
I would suggest that if you are.
And does that have to be in the notice?
If you are going to be doing interviews, then yes, you should be in executive session for those interviews. Um, and that would have to be noticed as part of the agenda. And, and as you are fully aware, no decisions can be made during that, but, you know.
Is Phil Balsi, or is he away, or could be a bell for this?
I cannot answer that, he certainly sent me a note that he was not, something suddenly came up that he had to attend, so we will let him.
So at a special meeting, does that allow for anyone else who's?
No.
Um, interested or wanting to be a candidate to present themselves, or not?
No, doesn't mean you can't add to the agenda.
Cannot add to the agenda.
Can't add to the agenda. Anyone can participate, if we're going to notice, and it's on Zoom. Uh, if we go into executive session, we will have to ask others, not at all, okay? To that point, if anyone come, we have basically locked the door, have we not? Are we, are we taking any more applications?
I, I have not, I've not searched for anyone else, we, we spoke to people that had expressed interest.
So, Tuesday?
January 4th.
By Zoom.
Seven o'clock? By Zoom.
So strictly Zoom?
Strictly Zoom.
Then how do you go into executive session?
As we would, uh, here, we're in executive session.
Anybody other than board members are asked to exit the Zoom meetings?
Come back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I say Zoom, it just seems a lot easier, I mean, we are talking ourselves into making it more complicated, but seems easier than rather than bringing us all in here for a half hour.
Could be an hour, but.
I mean, I said Zoom, just because I thought it was in it, but it'd be more convenient. Does anyone wish to arrive here, okay?
I like Zoom.
Zoom is good, all right. So Jackie, you will be with us and, uh.
Sure.
Good, excellent. All right, that ends what I have identified as the internal Board of Finance type information, which means that we would go to, should we call it recommendations of selectmen, Angus, or just conversations of the selectmen?
If you call it recommendations, uh, you will have none. Uh, but I do have some information to share, if you would like that. And I leave that to you guys, we're moving on, okay? First item, uh, two weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen, uh, chose a vendor, um, for the solar, proposed solar project up on, uh, the town garage property. I think you guys were all aware that, that we had gone to bid on that, um, we got those bids. Subsequent conversations with the Board of Selectmen, um, led to, uh, different requests from the proposals. The, the original proposal, um, allowed for the town to, uh, benefit through, um, percentage of the electricity that was generated at the panel. Um, Dwayne had a great idea of asking, what about just a straight-up lease or something similar, a fixed, fixed fee, as opposed to a percentage of energy, um, produced? Uh, the, the, two of the four vendors who made proposals came back with a, with a proposal for that. But so, this, the, the day before the Board of Selectmen's meeting two weeks ago, we asked for a last best proposal. We received notice from one of those vendors that we already had their last best proposal, then the second vendor proposed, uh, gave us one more proposal. And that comes to a twenty-year fixed fee of, uh, forty-three?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand dollars, yeah.
Forty-three thousand one.
Forty-three thousand and one dollars for twenty years. So we chose that vendor, that was considerably higher than the, than the other, and we chose that vendor. That, that vendor is going to prepare a contract that we will send to our council for review. Uh, once that is reviewed and, and agreed, and we, we and our council agree that that's the proper contract for us, we will go to town meeting for authorization to, uh, to proceed. That will happen relatively quickly, this is through a state, uh, state and ever-source program that need, that, as far as I can tell, there's, this contract needs to be determined and, uh, awarded by the end of March, and so the construction can begin in the summertime. So we should really should start to see some benefits from this, uh, within a year.
I don't remember the lawn, I have in front of, is that the lawn?
To the, to the, to the left side of the access road.
Okay, yeah, same way, just, okay.
I don't think I missed anything, if you guys know anything. So that, that's the first thing, I, I'm fair, I'm very excited about that.
Over fifty thousand dollars a year of income?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand dollars a year.
Oh, I thought you said forty-three a month.
Forty-three thousand, forty-three thousand dollars.
Over twenty years.
And one, forty-three thousand and one.
And I could answer this, but I didn't. Um, what is the town, what does town pay in electricity per year?
Oh, boy.
Is it more than that, equal to that?
Considerably more than that. Considerably.
It helps, yeah.
It will be, it will go a long ways. But I like the idea, I, I'm really grateful that, that Dwayne and, and, uh, pushed the idea of getting a fixed fee, because it, it comes right into our coffers as opposed to being applied towards our electric bills. So it's, I think it's definitely the right way to go.
Other than showing up at the town meeting, there's nothing the Board of Finance has to do, it's just an interesting story to be told.
That's correct. Whereas there is no expense to the community other than counsel, uh, for the contract. Um, the next item information, we've spoke about this, um, over the last few months, and we spoke about this when we prepared our budget. But we are getting very close. In January, we are going to have to make a decision on who is going to supply us with body cameras and car cameras for our police officers. Uh, we are looking at, in the vicinity of fifty thousand dollars, uh, to, to outfit that. Um, the only question is whether or not we are going to be allowed to use the state police server as a place to store this. All indications right now are no, we are not in the immediate, but that the legislature is working with the state police to try and allow for it. So in the end, we are going to work very hard to buy equipment that is interoperable with the state police system. But we are going to have to buy ourselves a server so that we can, um, save the information for, for, at least in the interim. We are working with, uh, I, I spoke with the first select person in Chester and with the two resident troopers. But Chester is, is considering making some significant changes to their police program. And then we might enter into a contract, and again, this would come to the town, and we can't do it on our own, but would come to the town and enter into a program where we would share this cost and the server, um, here in Deep River. So they would, they would, just like what they do with the landfill, like they do with the, with the sweeper and other, other kind of, uh, regional efforts. They would share the expense and the maintenance expense of this server. But that's, that's in the conversation, and I anticipate that'll be coming to us. We have got to start making these orders, um, probably in January, so probably at our next January meeting, you will have some of this information.
Well, the information, well then, we will need to vote on that, but it's not in our budget.
We will need to vote on that, and we will need to vote to bring that to the town, because that's considerably over our limits to, um.
And then the AOC, money?
Um, I don't believe we can.
You're not premature, are you? Would there be any reason to wait a short period of time to the legislature so you would have, could avoid the?
I've spoken with, I've spoken with both of our representatives, and, uh, there will be no action in this session. And we can't, it's, the law is, we have to have this in place on July 1st. We can't put it off much longer.
Is the server a physical thing that will sit in some, on the floor in some room as opposed to the sky, cloud?
That's, that's, that, I'm leaving that to our IT people and the people that tell us. In, in my world, yes, it will be something physical. In the, in today's world, I'm not certain that that's the case. More than likely, it will be cloud-based. Um, just because that's where everything is.
And, and you, had you give us an estimate, you have given me an estimate. What is the estimate? Would you anticipate that number being?
Oh, I expect that's going to be in the vicinity of fifty thousand dollars. And we are not alone, Essex. Essex is doing the same thing right now. They have, they did not budget for it. Chester, um, is going to town meeting. Depending on how they move forward. But other towns like Old Line already bought the stuff. They bought the stuff last year. Just knowing that they were going to have to do it, so. But they don't know what they're, they haven't, they haven't bought a server yet, so. Because there was no, there was no defined what was going to happen, so. And the last bit of information is, has to do with fire trucks and grant applications. I know you all remember fondly our efforts to, uh, to, to obtain a grant, uh, for our fire truck, uh, a few years ago. Uh, we, we learned a few weeks ago that, uh, the same grant, the American firefighters' grant, assistance to firefighters' grant, um, has been extended, uh, to January 20th. And I can't promise anything, but we are going to apply again for another truck, and we are going to apply for the, um, breathing apparatus, and probably for the fit, the machine that fills the breathing apparatus. We're, we're in the process right now of doing that, and we, you know. I, I think that the, the cooperative effort, uh, is much better this time, and I think that the, the, uh, the grant will be better. And, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed. But this will not in any way affect the purchase, the existing, uh, purchase of the truck. That is something that we will, um, we will continue to fund the way that we have already planned to. This is for another truck, um, that the fire department is clamoring that, that they need, so we will, uh.
Does it re, what, how are you crazy? Is there re-filing of the same application versus a new?
It's a different application for, but it's the same agency.
Yeah.
FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
But you did not have to reconstruct much of the detail that you collected for first one?
Some of the detail from the first one we were able to use. Um, things like the narrative, it has changed dramatically. We have to, we have to change that. I, I fully believe that we did not get that grant because of the narrative.
Didn't sell it.
Yeah. But we're working pretty hard on it, and we've got, it's a good cooperative effort, so that's going to happen. Hopefully, we're successful this time. We have assurances from our federal, uh, representatives that they will keep their eyes on it. And, and actually, we found out that that had been extended with a phone, a phone call from Joe Courtney that, and Joe Courtney's connection to this area, Christine Palm, that they were looking for it. Where is your, where's your application? Where's your application? Because we want to push it. Um, so, well, there is no application, it's expired. He said, no, 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 it's, it's been extended, uh, through January, so we'll have, we'll have it, we'll have it done in time. And that's that from me.
Uh, while we're all set with the fire truck, I have heard, or my source is you, but we have no payment obligation coming up soon for the fire, fire truck?
I have not heard from anybody. Now.
This is a bad source. You're my source, and you're referring my information, so yes.
I have not heard from the fire department that, uh, that anything. Uh, and, you know, it's worth reaching out, but because we, um, we've spoken about whether we, uh, use our surplus money to fund the, the first payment.
Yes.
And then reimburse ourselves with the borrow when the, when the truck is finished. I like that idea very much. Why pay interest on seven months without, without having a truck here? But it's important for us to know when that payment is due, so we can start that mechanism.
Correct. And, and the audit will help us know what the magnitude of that surplus is. Excellent, good.
Is that truck still being built?
Oh, yeah.
It's going to take.
Oh, it was eighteen months.
Eighteen months?
Six months ago?
Yeah, so they got another year.
Yeah.
But it was the tentative first payment was due around, I thought it was due in January or something.
Uh, I don't remember. We, 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 we will, uh, find out.
Speaking of fire, do you wish to, um, share your, our, our meeting that you invited me to?
Oh, yes, the board of finance, but, but came, and, uh, but came from board of finance. We had, uh, two members of planning and zoning, um, a fire marshal, fire chief. I think we had someone from the fire commission. Uh, ambulance association and board of selectmen were at a meeting with the group that has been chosen and is beginning the needs assessment, survey, not survey, but needs assessment. And, uh, that was a meeting just so that each department could know what to expect as far as information that they need to provide to the, to the company. But also, um, to reassure us that, uh, you know, this was an independent study. Uh, that they do this, they do this around the country, and, uh, and it's going to take some time, but in the end, there will be an evaluation of the community as a whole, as to what our needs are for the fire department, for its public safety. So it will, it will include the ambulance association, it will include the police, uh, at a lesser extent, but those, you know, those will be part of it.
And that, that assessment probably puts a hole under the, puts a hole in our movement for work with the firehouse for a while.
It does. Um, and that's, that's a real problem for us, because that is something that we need to move forward. Uh, we are, we have a leaky roof over there, and that leak has led to something where we actually are going to need to do some, some construction, some reconstruction of the roof in one of the corners. And in my opinion, that we're now putting good money after bad, uh, by not having a firehouse built. But that is something that we, we need to get done. And, um, consensus seems to be that we, we wait until this evaluation comes out and gives us an idea of, of whether or not we're building what we need, whether we're building more than what we need, whether we're building less than what we need, whether location is proper, so.
So that could throw everything up in chaos if it's not what everyone is currently thinking.
I would not recommend chaos as the proper description, but it could certainly skew the direction that we have been moving.
You know, particularly if you have to choose a new spot for the firehouse. Wasn't that an enormous problem before?
It was not an enormous problem. What we studied last time, seven years ago or so, six years ago, was whether the current location would house what we need, a bigger place. And it was very tight, but it was determined that it could.
So when's this study supposed to finish its job?
You know, I don't remember. I think it was probably four to six months.
Correct. Future full of surprises, uh, for chaos. Do you wish to share that you have, uh, we now have a, an additional staff in the finance?
Oh, yeah. Yep, we have a new, a new assistant up in the, um, accounts managing department, um, who is actually one of our constables. He is, uh, he's, he's done accounting degree. And he's, uh, he's worked out really well. All of your reports actually came from him this, this past week. Kathy was on vacation, and he did a great job keeping us, getting our bills paid and keeping us going, so. I'm, uh, I'm very confident that we're going to have a, a good, a good relationship with Matt.
So that shouldn't put any pressure on this year's budget, although we have an assistant line, he's building it halfway through.
Yeah.
Um, is there, uh, is our revenue pressure with that line in the future?
If we're going to stay with Matt, we will see an increase in the, uh, in the budget for that position. His pay will be, uh, commensurate with his experience and, uh, and his abilities. And also, uh, it will make him, that will make him a full-time employee. But he has no need for the insurance, so he will do like other employees who get their insurance elsewhere, he will take a, um, a stipend towards that, which is much reduced from what the cost of the insurance would be.
All right, sounds good. Certainly, uh, we have, we need additional support in the finance department, and the incremental cost of full-time employees well within the, the need, say I.
Well, it will come in, you know, the auditors have been recommending it for, as long as we've been struggling to fill the role.
Correct.
We need to, we should have another set of eyes up there.
I have one question. When did Matt send that email with the, with the?
Uh, Thursday or Friday, Thursday of last week.
Yes. Does anyone have any additional questions for Angus? I think you have captured all of the, um, and, now, that brings us to the, uh, you have to know that Matt sent.
Can somebody forward it to me?
Okay, indeed.
Would you like a copy of the reports? Oh, if you have a copy of it, yeah. So, thank you.
Yeah, December twenty, December 23rd, he sent it.
Yeah, no good. Okay, I'll, I'll get ahold of him and have him put me on the list.
Yeah, I'm not on the list either.
Oh, I'm, oh.
Sometimes we get it and sometimes we don't, so I, all that's a problem.
Carmel, do you have any problem if I had trouble printing it out? I know you have some time to time troubles printing these things out.
I can't open anything that comes in on a wind document. It has to be a PDF. I don't know why.
His was not a PDF. Kathy usually sends a PDF. His was not. I had trouble opening it.
Stuff you send is on a wind document, and I can't open it.
I don't know what a wind document is, but that's, it is the same, well, I, I take hers, un-PDF it and put it in, uh, in Word, in Excel.
Are you, uh, Mac? Apple? No?
Apple.
Apple, okay.
You need two?
I'm different myself, Mac.
Just one.
I'll be okay, Mac.
When Joyce sends me stuff, she sends it, I guess, redoes it and sends it out in PDF.
Okay, I got nothing.
I wish somebody would invent a mask with little tubes that come down for the people who wear glasses.
Yeah, the vents down instead of up.
Yeah.
I actually have nothing on the other end.
You can't see anything because your glasses get all tied up.
Yeah, you can't winch your wipers on the inside. Thank you so much.
If you're tolerant, I'll use my usual rule of thumb. I'm going to call this a budget for six months of the year. That's what it says at the top. Since we're still in December, you would wonder what, how accurate my statement is, but let us believe it's for six months, which would suggest we should be spending about sixty percent of our, fifty percent of our budget in every line there. So anything above fifty, I will smile upon. I'll give a smiley bit. Certainly seems like the selectmen's budget has almost universally exceeded sixty percent. Um, the only one that is off is, might bring your attention, is engineering services. I guess you have been using engineers, I assume?
Yes.
For various things, okay? Logical things. Do you think that is under pressure? Are you going to need more money than that?
Hope not.
If that's a good answer? Excellent answer. Um, and, uh, elections, uh, sixty-seven percent. I mean, there, and if you remember in the, in prior years, we've had pressure on that. We've had one election. Conceptually, we will have another, or two more elections, right? But we made some, we, we worked hard to get these numbers to reflect actuals.
Well, this is going to be a little bit skewed, because we right now are, because you're filling the role, so it should be okay. Because we had a resignation and a replacement, all that kind of stuff, but. Should be close to a time. But we will see some pressure on the educational part of that.
She was, no, 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 okay.
Laurie has required to do some more, and the state has required more education mandated, uh, that, that takes place.
Do they have to be present, or do they do it Zooming now? Okay, I'll do that one for you.
Zooming is my guess.
Um, town operations, again, I'm using microactivity of anything above fifty, if I'm happy with. Town clerk seems fine. It's interesting, town clerk in the past has generally exceeded her microfilming licensing service fees. This is, uh, got lots left. This is, got lots left. Such a close a conversation. But, so take heart, folks, I don't tend to talk about areas. Does anyone have anything they wish to call out? Tax collectives fine. Social services. Comment, I guess, comment on your newsletter. You have almost exhausted, that's not true. You got about 22% left. You plan on one more for the year?
Nope.
And tell me about the revenues.
Revenues, uh, let's look. Revenues are doing great.
They're doing great, good.
Yeah. No, our next newsletter will come out in the spring, so we're, oh, yeah, so one more this year.
She got one more in his budget, which seems 22% should cover.
Actually, maybe two more.
Maybe two, okay, which would put pressure on you, okay.
Okay, no, one more.
Well, no, um.
That's all you got, so that's one more.
Well, that's logical.
Will be one more. If Joyce, what Joyce says, that's what it is.
We got things to say. Again, anyone comment, let's, oh, you know, I guess what we forgot to talk about and you will now talk about it. Police protection cost for a vehicle.
Oh, yes. You will see, we've already, I think we've already over expended that.
Yes.
We had a, our oldest car, I can't remember what it, I don't want to say blew a gasket, but it, something happened in the, in the, in the engine. It was just, you know, a few thousand dollars worth of repair. So we will see more pressure on that. We, we have reached out to our friends at Wayland and they have nothing available for us right now. So, and in the preparation of this upcoming budget, our resident trooper has asked that we consider something that we haven't done in my experience in the town government here is actually put, put aside money. A new police car right now is about two years out, but it's, it's about $40,000. So he's asking that we put $20,000 aside this year and $20,000 aside next year towards the purchase of, of that new car.
You heard Michelle think about that? So anyhow, the, we have overspent at the vehicle maintenance line. We're aware of that and so there is additional pressure on that. Our decision has been, we are aware of it, we will pay attention to it and adjust, make adjustments at the end of the year.
Is the one that needs the engine work, is that the one that's parked next to the firehouse? No.
Firehouse, the fire department, which is next, is doing fine. Other than I remind you that we all agree, as did the town, that we have the needs assessment, which was about, do you remember the cost of that? 15, 16?
I think it was, I think it was 12, 14? I can't remember, it was less than 15.
It was up to 50, whatever, but the only thing I want is it's not yet reflected in this budget.
No, I saw your email, I'll make sure that I can say that.
And what, again, I promise not to do this, but Fire Marshal seems to be doing his usual adequate job. He asked for an assistant who does not seem to be, he does not seem to be calling upon his assistant, but to be told. We are still incurring very minor, but still incurring COVID expenses, $546. Not much, but we're budgeting.
Yeah, good, what do you mean? Where are you, but?
I am in civil preparedness.
Civil offense, yeah.
COVID.
We should not be incurring anything else with that, but we might be.
Really minor expense, but nevertheless, it is an expense.
Well, I will review where that, where that expense is coming from.
Highway department, it is lower than I would have preferred, except it seems to be driven by the two road maintenance lines. The town road maintenance of 198, we have spent the entire amount. And the town funded road maintenance of $200,000, we have spent $120,000. So that's driving the numbers down. Other than that, I think we're.
Yeah, well, let's, we try to, try to get those, those roads done and save enough money to get through the rest of the expenses.
And, and we talked about this, as Tommy pointed out, we have not yet received, well, the town, the state has not fully reimbursed us. Is that right, Tom? For our town, they come in sequence. So we are, we are spending more aggressively than we are funding, or at least our source funding, which is, we're all aware of that, it's fine.
I'm not, this is the first year since I've been sitting here that I'm not concerned. The state is plus with cash right now. They're promising, OPM just released all kinds of money as expected, which is, see some of this relatively soon.
That is good, that is good, good. Parking recs, always a mysterious group. I'm saying they're fine unless anyone wishes to go over. I'm a little curious with a sad face. They overspent their new programs by, not much, $500, but they shouldn't be overspending without chatting. Did they talk to you, Angus, about that?
No, and I'm not certain that that was an over expenditure or misappropriated.
Oh, okay, all right. I mean, it's, it's small, but they should talk to somebody.
I actually don't know of any new programs, so I, I can't imagine how that was that spent, but.
And remember, we assume that they will collect lots of dollars for such things as baseball and basketball. We call them self-funding program. I do not know how that is going, especially within the new wave of.
It's not going well.
But they don't spend it. If they don't spend it, they don't collect it. So the two should match themselves fairly well. How about the $40,000 in capital for the school? It is still unspent.
Yeah, we usually, that, that money this year was intended for the floors at the library. They're going to redo the carpet in the library. In the preparation for that, they had to pull cases of the carpet up and, and inspect whether or not there was any asbestos. We weren't certain of that. There was. That's going to, going to skew the expenditure considerably. And it's actually changed the plan. They've got to remove some, some of the asbestos. School's got to be closed when they do that. They will probably do that in the.
What do you say skewed? Skewed on calendar, skewed on dollars?
Nah, both.
Yeah.
Both. They have to, they have to remove the asbestos before they can redo the carpet. They've changed what they want to do. They actually don't, I think there are sessions that they don't want to put carpet in where they did before. So they're, they're changing their plans as to how, what they're going to do.
So you think we will spend more when this?
I think we will spend more, but not considerably more. And it will be scheduled in such a way that can overlap the, the budget year.
Uh, okay, we're in capital. What are we doing? What, fire department stations, we scheduled $1,920, this is the rather exact number. It has not been spent. Do you remember what that was for? Not very much. We just haven't spent any of it.
I don't remember what that was for.
I don't remember what that is either. Does anyone?
It might have had something to do with lights.
Okay, lights are always good.
Right, just, just FYI, we will be going, the next town meeting we go to, we will be asking the town to accept the land that was donated to, to the.
Will you do that at your solar meeting? At your next town?
If that's our next one, yes, that'll probably, whenever our next town meeting is, that's when that will happen.
And I assume you were planning on one in February, which would cover the two costs of hopefully the pension cost and the. It is the next one that I, I looked at you with eager eyes. Loser, $120,000 is a grant that we applied for. Looks like you've spent 114 of it, but you have not received any of that grant.
Correct, that's, that was more road projects. And we have some other additional costs on, oh, some improvements at the Veterans Memorial. The patio in front of that.
Okay.
It's about 11, well, the last bid that we got was about $11,000 to, to finish repairing that.
Okay. Are you asking the state for your money or?
Oh, yeah. No, it's, it's part of what would, you know, we're in the process of making those applications. I don't see any reason that we wouldn't.
No, it's, it's money set aside for us, isn't it? And the school roof is proceeding along? We've got the grant?
School roof, I think they're waiting for, actually, I thought they might be up there this week. They're, they're, they're struggling with material for that and I'm not sure where they are with that.
Pretty close, they got $24,000 unpaid, okay. Now, again, if we look at revenue, if you wish to look at revenues, you will see that that grant we received is not yet reflected in the budget revenue.
Right.
We'll deal with that, so. All right, anyone, does anyone wish to go over? That's, that's the expenses. I see no, nothing for anyone, anyone to be concerned about unless anyone wished to overrule that. Revenue seem to be coming in fine, like Tommy pointed out. Anyone wish to go over revenues, make it fine?
No, we're plus, plus 55%, right? Revenue's a company, yes, 55% of our revenue so far.
Yes. Which, well, there's a complicated story, yes. And we'll get a large book of our revenues beginning right now. I wonder how much, people like me, I assume I'm not alone, used to pay your property taxes due in January and December to get tax deduction. Now that Connecticut, we have lost that deduction, I wonder if people would logically slow it down and pay in January. You guys less cash flow. All right. Anyone have any other items they would like to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn and we will, I assume, we will see everyone on January. Oh, you need a second? Okay. I go, Carmelo?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks, guys.
All right, guys, good job.